Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Cheshire Cast. I am your host Cory.
And I am Trisha.
You're also a host.
I am a host. Hi.
So yes.
I'm a virtual host. We're talking ahead.
You're not virtual.
Sure we are. Right now we are. Literally, we're literally virtual.
But you are a real person. You're not a virtual person.
Oh, right now I am.
Through my connection.
I'm literal and I'm literal and virtual at the same time.
Correct.
Causing some sort of cosmic shifts, I'm sure.
Everything short circuited now. Everybody's head just went, I'm leaving. How are you?
Uh, by the opening comments, you can see I'm handling quarantine well. I'm a little stir crazy, but it's okay.
Yeah, I went for like a five and a half mile walk today.
Did you? Good for you. I haven't gone out. I haven't gone out yet.
At all? Oh, like not even on your back porch?
Yes, I've been on my desk.
Okay, so you've been on like within the confines of your property?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been outside.
I'm planning on doing some yard work. Like it's, you know, I got big plans.
I, I, um, I carry around a six foot pipe with me.
Okay.
And I just swing it back and forth in front of me. So anybody who is within six feet of me just gets hit with it.
From what I'm hearing, you must be hitting a lot of people.
I am. I am.
Why?
Because I want to protect, I want to keep that six foot distance and I figure the only way is physical violence.
I understand why you're hitting people. Believe me, I'd be doing the same thing, but I understand why do people, you know, they're encroaching.
I, um, I think.
Different strokes for different folks.
You know, I hate, I hate to make fun of people, but I think that they're either, uh, not aware of their situation and their environment. They're just dense or, um, or they're not educated. And you know, maybe wherever they're from, their board of education is terrible. I don't know.
Well, maybe they're not doing proper distance learning.
They might not be. Yes, correct. See, this, this is a, this is an interesting way to segue into things. I, I'm getting worse at segues, I think, as we go.
It's, I, I give you full excuse for anything at this point. The fact that we're even still doing shows that are semi coherent, kudos.
No, it's, 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 it's the truth. I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're keeping, we're managing, we're keeping up with our schedule. We're putting out some interesting content. We've got a bunch of shows done. I've got some in the can that I have to edit and get out there. And you know, you and I are also doing some good things with members of our community, um, you know, and, uh,
Trying.
Yeah, we're trying and that certainly gets us out of our own space, but that's, you know, the people that know.
I donated to the Cheshire Food Pantry. So you can go on Amazon and fulfill wishes on there. They send it directly to them. So there's no contact or anything. You just, they have a wish list and you just order from the wish list and you know, that was cool. That's always fun to do to give food, especially now when people might be becoming a little, there's a little food scarcity possibly with the economic times. And we just put together a meal train for somebody in the community whose family has been devastated by COVID.
Yes.
So anything I can do to help, I know helps me tremendously, even though I can't leave the house and I can't, I'm not a first responder. I'm not even teaching anymore. So it's, it's a way I feel, um, I can help. And maybe be a platform where others might be able to extend help that can't in other ways too. So.
Well, isn't it be the change that you want to see in other people, you know?
Sure.
Set the example and hopefully other people will follow.
Treat others as you would want to be treated or.
Is there any other, any other?
Isn't that a commandment or something? I'm no, I'm no commandment.
I don't think that's a commandment. Well, it might've been on that third tablet he dropped.
Do you want to others?
No, 10.
You know, but I heard there was 15.
You know, I have a funny story about that if you ever want.
Well, let's introduce you and then you tell your story. So with us on today's show, we have from the Cheshire Board of Education. We have, uh, Mr. Adam Grippo.
Hi.
And Mr. Tony Pereguini. Did I say that right?
You said it perfectly Cory.
Awesome. Uh, and you are the, are you, you're the chair of the board event?
Yes, I am.
Welcome to the show, guys.
Thanks for having us. Looking forward to it.
Well, we've been trying to, no lie, I think this is, this, this is the fourth time we rescheduled your, your episode.
So yeah, you guys have been trying, I think since like December, not mistaken, or January, I forget.
It's been a long road, but I'm glad you guys are on and the timing couldn't be more perfect, to be quite honest. I know, I know worldviews, it's not ideal, but to have you guys on right now, you can, there's so much, you know, you guys can talk about.
But Adam had a story first.
Oh, it's a, it's a dumb story.
Related to our opening. So, but no, tell your dumb story, please.
We love a good segue.
I don't know if it was like maybe fifth, fifth grade or something, but Cheshire used to have a video store. I think it was called Video Galaxy or something like that.
And rentals?
No.
Oh, it was in Maplecroft Plaza, no?
Uh, I think it was across the street at the.
Or the old strip mall where, uh, um.
Where Goodwill used to be and stuff like that.
Oh.
No, no, where the gym is, I think, with the.
Really?
I don't know, one of those.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway. And so I, I had rented, uh, History of the World Part Two, or History of the World Part One, right? Is that what it was? That you were referencing, the third tablet?
Yeah, yes.
And so, you know, at the end they have the, the, yeah, the trailer for, for History of the World Part Two. And so I went and I returned the video and then I asked the guy, I said, so, uh, do you have History of the World, History of the World Part Two? The guy just looks at me, he goes, um, that's a joke.
Yes.
And I was like, oh, okay, thanks.
And spent the next year trying to figure out how it was funny?
Yeah, exactly.
Wait, did you finally get the, I think he finally got the joke as we were doing our opening.
No.
I think it finally dawned on him. He's like, oh, oh, I got it.
Like I said, I was like fifth or sixth grade or something. So, you know.
You, do you want me to explain the joke to you, Trisha?
Oh, I don't.
Okay.
Oh.
I don't remember the trailer. I don't remember the, I don't remember.
So you're gonna, your homework is to watch that movie this weekend.
Or at least watch the end.
I'm so busy Cory. I'm so busy.
I know, you got so much to do.
There's so much to do.
I've, I've, I've known Adam for a very, very long time. So I may, I may, I may make a couple inside jabs. I apologize to everybody but Adam for that. I'm going to do my best to keep the show professional, but I need, I also need a little bit of entertainment.
For a change.
And by the way, I think this might be my fourth time on the Cheshire Cast.
So you were in the inaugural showing, first episode where I met Cory and you. You did a political episode with us.
Yep.
You did a Republican Town Committee with us. This is your fourth time. Congratulations. I think, I think you beat out Jinxie now.
I think, yeah, well, you know, we always have a quiet competition between me and Jinx. So, yeah.
I think you were both up to three. Now you're up to four and I think four is max. I don't think anybody's been on.
I think you get an award.
I was gonna say you need a certificate or something.
Here.
You're definitely patient, that's for sure. You're very tolerant.
It's a, it's an acorn.
Oh, that's great. I can think of so many uses for that.
What, can you whistle with it?
No, I can't.
Of course Cory can because it's a really annoying noise.
Amen. Uh, so, um, so boy, there's a lot to talk about with.
Where do we even begin?
Like I don't, I have no idea where to start.
Okay, originally when I asked you guys to come on the show, we were gonna talk modernization committee. Cause, cause it's cool, but since that conversation, there's been advancement on the modernization committee. I think there is one. Uh, there's been tours of the schools where you guys have gone around and looked at improvements that could be made. I think there's been talk of budgets. I mean, we're talking time has passed and now we have the kids out on distance learning. So we have a whole, wow, we gotta fit it in too, in the next 40 minutes. So where do you guys want to start? You want to talk, on Talk Modernization Committee?
Well, since you bring it up and that's, you know, uh, yeah, that's, that goes back. It's, it, it, just for, uh, history purposes. It's been four years now since the board did or started that original monetization plan. It was presented at town council in spring of 2017, but the, the board back then started in early 2016. So we're going into 40 years of figuring out what to do with the school. So it's a.
That's a long time of discussing.
It, well, you know, half the time there was really not much going on. There was very little discussion. I think what happened was, you know, I was on the board when we did the original plan. You know, we kind of rushed it to the town council in the spring because our hopes were to do at least enough funding for a new middle school. Try to get the referendum that year. And I think the board had hopes to get in front of town council in March. Having those, um, election or referendum in June. And town council, it just, there was no time for that. And there was a lot of question that they had to churn through. So, you know, that started in 2017 and yeah, boy, we got a lot of feedback plan. Um, you know, 404 million dollars per Adam's interest to get on the board and find out what's going on. But, uh, it was like, there was a positive stuff halfway through that where we got a chance to look at the Alexion building. And that was a great collaboration with town council. Unfortunately, the builder sold the building, you know, couldn't really wait for us. That would've been a heck of a deal. And, um, and time is packed.
The structure was already there.
Yeah, it was very modern, it was made up very well. I mean, it was a example of an older building. Uh, that was pretty much gutted to the ground and on top. It would've lasted another 40, 50 years plus. And, uh, so that was an awesome opportunity. Unfortunately, you know, the builder was very helpful, but just couldn't wait for a town to move forward. And so, I know when, uh.
We all know how quick the town moves on things.
Well, you know, that's, it's interesting, but I will say that, uh, you know, the town council last few years, and especially Rob Oris, you know, Rob and I talk all the time. You know, we felt the best way to move forward is let's, let's work together. We had a great opportunity working together at Lexion. And, um, this was too big for any one body to figure out on their own. So hence the monetization committee. And they've been working, we've been working since, uh, right after the election. Uh, we started up before election. Had the members on board. We had many meetings, subcommittee meetings. We actually have two RFPs back from, uh, two representative owner, uh, reps that were starting reviewing and then boom, the virus hits. And, uh, it's been an interesting year, but that committee's doing a lot of hard work.
And just like that, the facilities are not even being used. How crazy like.
They were a few more weeks out of them when school resumes.
Well, we can, we can hope school resumes.
You got a new word on that? You got any inside scoop? Cause I'm hearing some places are talking about the fall now, possibly even being.
Well, it's just gonna come down to what the governor's gonna do. So, you know, these daily calls with the governor, with the education. Last I heard from superintendent on Friday was that the government of Lamont was gonna make some kind of decision by the April 10th. Whether to extend the closures or not. So.
Wow.
The chatter seems to indicate that might be extended, but until we get official word, we'll have to see.
Now, let me ask you a question about, uh, for, for example, Dodd, okay? So, so Dodd School, I mean, it's the, the, the big topic of conversation has been, you know, what do we do with Dodd? Lexion was one of the options. Dodd sits in the middle of a beautiful residential area. Um, now, is it, is it feasible at all for the town to build, either build or repurpose a building, uh, move the school and then take down the old school and sell off that property to private owners?
Anyone take that one?
Yeah, sure. I mean, well, for me, I always say, um, uh, it's a problem that, it's a problem that, uh, a giant pile of money would solve essentially. Um, because you know, we, you take the tour, I don't know. No Cory, you weren't there. Um, but we, you know, we took the tour of Dodd, right? Lasted, I don't know, a couple hours actually going through the entire building. Um, and then we get back and we start talking about, you know, the conditions of, of the building, what we saw. And, and it, and it's a really a question of, of what the modernization committee and the town in general wants to do because.
Right, but, but could that property be sold if, if, if the building was moved to a private owner or, or subdivided and sold as residential property?
Is it zoned for that?
If, if, if the building was moved, let's just say we went through all the rigmarole and, and everything was approved. We built a new building. Can the town recoup some funds by selling that property?
I mean theoretically, but it would, I think it would have to go through.
Yeah.
The reality is, let's say the monetization committee comes back and says, hey, you know, hypothetically, let's keep Dodd a middle school, uh, seventh grade, renovate. Then obviously we hang onto the property, but if we decide to do something else with it, now that building becomes free. It's gonna be up to the town whether they will sell it. And then I got a question. Who would buy that space there if it was anything other than residential? And as you guys know today, sometimes even if you see, uh, pick up and drop off a Dodd. When the parents are gonna, you got lions going down the streets. I know the neighbors aren't always too happy about that situation. My guess, you know, if the town were to do something with it, I'm sure a neighbor would wanna kind of keep it low key. But it's a big town decision. I, I'm not even sure if it's zoned for that. I can't believe why it wouldn't be, but.
So one, one of the conversations is to possibly make that a middle school, if you will, and do sixth and seventh grade and then move eighth, ninth, 10th or eighth through 12, uh, 12 to a high school? Is that right or no?
The original, uh, facility master plan had a middle school pegged for sixth, seventh, eighth grade somewhere. Somewhere and Dodd was a consideration at the time, but for the footprint that it has, we're not be able to accommodate that many students, let alone the parking or the buses going in and out. So it was too small a property to, to do that. Um, so as it stands right now, it's still seventh, eighth grade. It can still be seventh, eighth grade. But I know the committee is looking, is asking the board and superintendent to look at other options, because we looked at a number of things. Four years ago, keep it as is, renovate as new, renovate in place, you know, uh, knock it down, rebuild. So I think they want to see all those options. And I mean, they know something has to be done there.
Has a decision been made?
No, not yet.
Is it in the works to being made?
Yeah. So that committee has seen a tour of Dodd of the high school of Chapman, uh, of Highland. And I think we have a couple more schools left. And you know, I, from my, my view, I'm trying to be very, uh, not intrusive in those meetings, let them make their own decisions. I'm starting to see that the lights are on that, hey, you know, there's space limitations. Uh, some of the buildings are just not, you know, laid out that great for, for learning. So there's definitely space issues, storage issues. So they're putting those pieces together. But, um, the last couple of meetings have gone back to, okay, we recognize something's gonna be done, but what can a town afford kind of discussion? And I think you mentioned earlier, Trish, they, uh, not so much a budget was discussed and the GAN was there for a couple of meetings, but Jim Jaska came and gave us basically how the town debt service works, what the thresholds are, you know, and what it would look like if there was a $75 million capital expenditure. So they're starting to look at those.
But you guys are getting educated on how to town borrow for the expenditure.
Right.
Yeah, well, basically.
Cause you guys are just citizens. It's not like you're, you know, it's not like you're business lawyers and school builders. You guys are all citizens of the town that are volunteering. You guys all have to learn about this too. So somebody came in and said, all right, this is, this is how it's gonna work. If you need this amount of money, this is how town bonding works, right? Cause how would, how would people on the board know?
Well, it's interesting. That committee's made a different discipline. Uh, there are some financial folks on there. There's construction experts on there, but you're right. It's, none of us really know. And again, this is really the town council, town manager, Adam, Adam knows finances better than I do. That, uh, there is a cost to borrowing. Um, it's hundreds of millions of dollars. It, it will put Cheshire in a bind.
Well, can't we just print that money?
Yeah, well, hey, you know, Washington's doing that. I just saw what, $2 trillion package go out and another trillion dollars. It will take some of that money.
Well, let's, uh, let's switch back to, uh, when I, when I kind of cut Adam off. Um, you know, he was getting into a little bit of the condition of the school. And, and I think the, the big topic, Adam, is, is Dodd more than, uh, more than any other. Um, how, how bad? You know, how old is Dodd? How bad is, you know, is it really? And, you know.
Are our kids safe?
Yeah, yeah, all that, go.
I mean, uh, my impression was that the, the building was safe. Um, and, but again, there were safe, not safety considerations. There were space considerations. I know, um, you know, one of the, the, well, the three things that probably impacted my memory of the tour was the, the, one of the science rooms that they showed where the, uh, the ceilings were lower than they would like. But more importantly, that because of the lack of climate control, that the ceiling tiles would sort of like buckle in between the frames. Yeah, they would bow. Yeah. Uh, so I mean.
From like humidity or something?
Yeah, exactly. And the temperature change in general. And so, you know, to me, it's, it's mostly, you know, if we could just get climate control in a lot of these buildings, it would certainly make a lot of them a lot better. But there, you know, there are other issues like even with like in Chapman. You'd see there, you know, the, the, the student, not the, the teacher lounge is like shared with a copier machine and stuff like that. And it's like, well, you know, that's not a real great work environment, or you know, a place that to hang out when you're not, you know, you know, teaching children. So there's like, you know, modern space considerations in a, in a lot of these schools.
Also the classroom has changed, right? So we, you didn't answer, how old is Dodd? Just an estimate. Is it 75 years old? Is it 150 years old?
I don't know. I don't know the, I would call it at least 60, probably.
Okay, so in the last 60 years, education has changed from an institutionalized model, right? Kids and desks, learning authoritarian. Learning now is more of a casual group dynamic, right? So the rooms are now addressed differently. Learning spaces have changed. And our schools are kind of stuck in that, although there's, there's a way to mitigate some of that obviously, right? Cluster desks and, and small things like knocking down walls or repurposing spaces, but that can only go to a certain extent. And we're in Connecticut and I know I moved here for, for the education for my kids. And I look around at the other schools and I just see these, these group spaces and these campuses that are just modern and inviting and creative spaces.
But they all have so much money behind them.
Do they? But why don't we? What, what, what's the difference?
Anybody want to touch that one?
Yeah, sure. Well, I had, I gotta talk about the space itself. So you're, you're, you're right, Trish. So, I mean, I went to a parochial school when I was younger in Waterbury and it was cinder block walls. The rooms were about, you know, the size of Dodd, smaller and it was, you know, one day. You sat there in line. You didn't move. It was.
Tony, are you old enough to have been hit with a ruler too, by the nuns?
I get hit with all kinds of things. Yeah, rulers, uh, you know, because it was an Italian St. Lucys, all the Italians.
Allegedly.
Waterbury, allegedly.
I allegedly got hit by rulers too.
He was Italian and the parents were Italian. So, you know, as far as concern, they're extension of my parents, right? So I was out.
Bear the rod, spoil the child.
I was sitting in the corner. No, but it was actually very pleasant. Don't get me wrong. I just, but, but if, what we saw, I think, I think Adam was in that tour. We saw a couple of larger classrooms where they do have the configurable desks, where you can cluster them together in a group easily and turn it from a lecture form to a group format, you know, make a U shape, make it more inclusive. And also be able to segregate, for example, a group activity where the teacher have the, the work on something together. And then in the core, somewhere else part of the room have a one-on-one scenario with a student. He's a little bit more one-on-one with the teacher. You know, it sounds simple, but when you see some of the classrooms and type configurations, it's almost impossible to do. And, uh, but you're right, it's become a more dynamic format. And I think one of the positives we saw at Dodd is a lot of the, uh, special education classrooms are set up with those desks and that works really well as a format. And they want to do more of that, more in the classroom. And that's your theme throughout all the schools is have more of that configurable space. Storage, you know, there's almost no storage. We saw the, the chemistry labs at the Cheshire High School. You know, when we walked in there, basically all supplies, speakers and everything were stored on top of desks. As soon as you walk in, there's no place to put stuff. So there's some space.
In the high school, the science labs are kind of parochial as well. Like even the, uh, equipment is a little, the desks, the equipment, bunsen burners, it's all kind of aged.
And also, there's also HVAC, uh, issues there too, you know, most of the schools. But yeah, the, the format's changed and, uh, I, I think what, you know, you, you've been hearing, it's been less about, let's get all the latest and greatest TVs and teleconferencing devices in the room and computers. They already have, um, Chromebooks and so forth. It's more about that delivery format, maybe configurable. That's, I think.
If that's just the aesthetic, then.
Well, we did have a, a huge to do about the content and the delivery of, uh, what was that now? Two, two years ago with, uh, Summit, Summit Learning and.
Three.
Was it three years ago?
2017.
Man, time flies too fast, too fast. It's gotta slow down.
That came and went. That was a blip on the radar of learning. Education does that though. We buy programs and we abandon programs. It's just how it works.
And both randomize is still a living nightmare.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure because. Well, you know.
Zuckerberg, he's a powerful thing.
Being, being, being a guy who's in IT and, you know, I, the dominant portion of my career has been IT related. I, I know more about IT than your average guy. And I still find that I, you know, information technology can still instill fear in many people. Like people are legit.
Depend on how it's wielded.
Afraid of technology and they, you know, why should my kid learn how to type? You know? It's still sometimes a concern where to me, I'm like, my kids need to learn how to type because any job they're gonna have, even if it's a plumber, they're gonna be required to type on a keyboard.
Unless it's a doctor. You've seen my kid's handwriting? Oh my gosh.
Well, if that's the case, then all of my children will excel at being a doctor.
It's awful.
And I, and I think a lot of what you guys mu- mu- you, you must run into is, is that same thing, that fear of technology. Like, oh, technology is bad. And you know, it can't do anything good when, you know, I mean, where, where, where is it? Is it, is it on the parent to educate themselves on what technology is? Or is the technology at its root a bad thing for our students? I mean, I guess that's a two-fold question. What are your thoughts on it? And, and what's the, uh, what's the general consensus of everyone?
You know, I have my thoughts on it. I'll let Adam go first. He's, I know this is near and dear to him.
Oh, I know too.
The digital divide. This is a huge topic, the digital divide.
To me, um, I think just even more recently, you, cause, um, almost the entire school system now is on Google Classroom, right? Um, the biggest difference now, and I haven't read the entire service agreement for Google Classroom. Um, but to me, the, the biggest difference between Google Classroom and Summit, um, was that Summit in their, in their service agreement basically said that whatever you put into Summit, if you make any changes to Summit, if a teacher decided that the he, well, it wasn't supposed to be curriculum, but the, any content that the teacher added, um, what became the property of Summit. So if you put it in there, they, they get, it's.
Just like corporate America, to be honest with you.
Yeah. But where, where what Google Classroom appears to be is a shell, right? And that, and our, uh, you know, uh, Marlene Solano, our assistant superintendent and, and, um, oh crap, I forget. It's, it's Kevin. Tony, can you help me out? Uh, our new, our new K through eight curriculum coordinator, um, uh, they've been working to, to add a lot of, a lot of materials to Google Classroom and convert over from, I believe it's called Power School. Um, and, and they've been trying to, to adapt our curriculum to, to the new Google Classroom. So at least that's some of it is on, you know, it works through the Google, Google Chromebooks, but it's still our materials. And, and the, and the vendors that we purchased it from or the, our, our teachers who developed it, it's still ours. It doesn't become Googles. You know, and that, I think that's a distinct difference where it's so like the things that make Cheshire schools great remain ours. It doesn't become part of someone else. And I think that's something that a lot of parents had a problem with is that. So that even if a child wrote a paper in Summit, it becomes property of Summit somehow. It was a very strange agreement.
Gets added to the collective of sharing.
Well, that, I mean, that makes sense. You know, being explained that, that simply that, that makes sense. And I get that. And as a, as a parent, I don't want, I mean, I, I don't, I guess not even as a parent, you know, now that I'm thinking about it, even as a taxpayer, I mean, I pay. I'm, I'm here because of the schools and I don't, I guess I don't, I really don't want what's done here to be just, everybody can have. I don't know.
Education is one of those things.
No.
Education is shared. And I think teachers and educators are constantly trying to share techniques, methods, theories to improve education as a whole. I've never seen. I've never seen firsthand reporting of ideas. And if Cheshire's.
I think I think.
Cheshire was shareable, imagine imagine the profits that could be made off of that.
Well, it's funny you say that, so.
This is also why I love having her as a co-host, because her opinion of this is completely different than mine, I think. And I and I love that. So it's it's a great.
Yours is still valid.
But even without Summit or Google Classroom, teachers are still sharing content. You know, it's it's when I first got on the board, I kind of dated myself was two thousand and nine, when Dr. Floyd was the superintendent. We were going through curriculum review and I I learned back then that at the time, Cheshire Public Schools would actually sell someone's curriculum to other surrounding schools because of of the math and so forth. So they were they were doing it in some capacity before Summit. My take on Summit and I I think I share the IT background. I've been doing IT for my whole career.
Yes, you and I have talked offline about that.
Yeah, yeah, it was a great conversation and the it it's new technology every day. I feel people feel that they're losing control of their privacy or, you know, so much misinformation.
True.
You don't know what to trust. So education and communication, you know, honest communication is a big part of it. When I look back to Summit, you know, how we rolled it out and how we communicated, it it was awful. Um, there wasn't really good communication, both from the board at the time and from administrators. Now, we would send emails to parents and hey, we're gonna do a pile on Summit. But a lot of parents had no idea what that was. They already had Google Classroom. They think, oh, it's just an extension of Google Classroom. And so we learned that, A, we have to be more transparent and teach not just the students how to use this, but the parents. And perhaps the biggest feedback we got was from parents that said, hey, you know, if you want us to help support this, you help educate us because we have no idea what this is. Our kids are getting pressured with, I guess it was a status bar in Summit Learning that kind of showed them where they were in the progress. And a lot, some of the kids felt anxiety because they would do an exercise and the bar wouldn't move. And they start freaking out and the parents are, so after the fact, you know, we end up having more discussions with parents. And when they got in front of the board, I remember one meeting at the end of just kind of the board, we were much cornered, packed room in Homestead. And, you know, it turned into um basically a yelling match from from parents in the audience, because they felt the board wasn't listening to them. And at that point, I I knew that, you know, we missed the boat on communicating what this was all about and getting their feedback ahead of time. It didn't help that there are all these other stories out there, whether it's true or not, that, you know, Zuckerberg was sharing information and.
And there was content on there that that they didn't deem appropriate.
That was the other part was, I, you know, the external content that was not under uh control. There wasn't a good process to vet that. So if a if a if a teacher yanked in a reference, you know, that when you watch that video, I think there was one uh parent that said they were watching a video from Summit that we linked to. And it opened a pop-up window and and showed either something inappropriate or, you know, spam and, you know.
Yeah, but wasn't that inappropriate content? A pi- a a four hundred year old picture of.
There was a there was a few things. Um, one, one, one uh, one parent's household uh had like some kind of uh tri- you know, X-rated, I don't know, ad pop up on their home computer.
Oh.
From a week, from a Discovery Channel site, whatever. And, you know, that's when you lose control over the content. Well, classrooms, Adam alluded to.
People lose confidence from that moment.
Yeah, and, you know, so it's on top of all the anxiety, you know, that it's also face back and it's, you know, not well secured.
And as soon as you hear Zuckerberg, you know they're data mining. You're just in your head, you just think my data is being mined. You can't help but think that now.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's that's where their money is. It's measuring how the site's being used.
Well, that's that's the new gold.
How it's being used, how kids are using technology, how how technology is gonna advance education and how education is gonna advance the technology. It's a huge, there's, it's a mine, a gold mine there. And I think Cheshire was right for trying to be on the front of that.
Yeah, good data is priceless.
And that's a double-edged sword being on the front of technology. Because if you're guinea pigs, you're guinea.
That was new. You know, there wasn't really much time, you know, and uh, you know, the the good side of it is there actually were a lot of kids that bent from it. You know, the bad of it is there was a probably a lesser minority of folks that were, you know, anxiety, you know, because A, either didn't understand it, they weren't coached enough, you know, I think it was a little bit rushed. But uh.
Any educational platform too, in your defense.
Yeah, well, we learned what to do from that and what not to do. And, you know, when Adam got on board, you know, the thing we changed was more transparent communication. And what's really funny is um, I don't, I'll mention their names. I know they won't mind, but we have some prominent um, I'm not sure what to call them, not critics, they were critics. Now I think they're more of our supporters where, you know, uh, I'm thinking Mary Burnham, Theresa Commune, there's a group of parents out there that we met through something that were basically saying what we're doing wrong and, you know, terrible at it, you know, with the communication and stuff. That today, I just happened to read a post on education forum, they're actually defending some of the things happening on Google Classroom. So they they were actually able to come around because now they're seeing that we're being more transparent, we're trying to be helpful, we're listening and you know, information. And that's usually the difference, you know, I think uh the last board is, you know, you know, I've said this to all them in the past, so there's nothing new there. They just did a terrible job confronting the situation. I think we clammed up and then respond. And since then, we responded and, you know.
Well, some. Some of that transparency transparency stuff that 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 was such a big word in in the election. I mean, we heard every single candidate from Board of Ed to town councils. You know, they talk about transparency. And I know from from having served on a committee in town, the information's always been there. You know, the 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 meeting minutes have always been published, whether it's been on paper or online. Um, everything is out for public consumption. So when people say, oh, they're not transparent, they're not putting stuff stuff out, is how much truth is in that and how much is, you know, for for lack of any other way to explain it, people just being lazy, straight up lazy. Um, you know, how much can we do to put information out there? Right now, today, in twenty, in in twenty twenty, I mean, we got it on Facebook, we got it on PDF forums.
YouTube.
YouTube, it's all out there and there's still.
Interactive YouTube.
There's still people that are gonna complain about it being, you know, there's no transparency, you know, you can't you you've you've liter- we've literally gotten to the point where we're spoon-feeding information to people and it's it's, I don't know. I'm I'm going, I'm I'm voicing a little bit of my frustration with it because I experienced.
Spend one more minute talking about Summit, we're remiss. Because although it came and went, we learned from it. We are now in the middle of a historical moment where millions, hundreds of millions of children right now have left the classroom. And they are learning in their homes on electronics, technology-based learning, distance learning. Um, that's huge, like something that could have never been thought, nobody would have thought of this.
But it's gotta be a nightmare for parents who don't understand technology, because I'll tell you, I spent hours this morning doing tech support.
It's 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 being done though. You did it. We're there. Kids are at home, they're fighting with the computers. The parents are fighting with the computers, but there are kids that are going to finish the grade and not have to repeat fifth grade, not have to repeat tenth grade, not have to repeat first grade because you guys pulled this off. It's huge. Take kudos for that.
Well, that being said, I mean, guys, is there any thought on, you know, a a s- um, a shorter school day? I mean, where kids can go to school for five hours a day and then, you know, work at home for three hours. I mean, I've seen.
Don't lose all, I love it.
I've seen.
I love it.
I've seen my my children's personalities, their personalities improve because they're getting sleep. You know, I mean, has that.
They have more control. They can check in. They know what to do. They know when it to do. They can click when they want. They can, it's fantastic. I hope some parts of these are incorporated when we go back.
Has that been brought up in conversation where, you know, hey, this this actually works a little bit? Can we, you know, relieve some of the strain of these long days from our kids?
Some facility concerns, some crowding.
Let them talk.
With so many ideas.
I mean, I'll I'll say, we we haven't really uh gotten to the part where we're assessing what has happened. Um, uh, we just, you know, had conversations today about, again, going back to the communication part and the transparency is we know that there are a lot of parents who have had the great fortune, especially in this town, be able to work from home. Um, I'm one of those parents. My wife uh works for a company who who was way ahead of the curve and she's been able to work from home from since everything started getting crazy. Um, and we're also tech savvy. And we've been able been able to work through the Chromebook with my son who's.
Grade is your son?
Uh, third grade. And they just started this week for for Chromebook, but we had started some stuff earlier. And um firstly, uh, commend the 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 teachers and and the staff originally because my son who was in third grade already was very familiar with the Chromebook and how to use uh Google Classroom at third grade. So I'm assuming that go.
I'll also add, Adam, that uh Giovanni has been in front of a keyboard since he was probably six months old. I mean.
Well, that's true.
He did, he did get some lessons here too, so.
A lot of our kids are tech privileged. I do, I do wanna announce, I do wanna say that.
Yeah, um, but there's also a lot of parents who aren't tech savvy and maybe some of the, some of their kids um aren't able to to sit in front of a screen. That was, you know, that's always a uh a constant drumbeat um on our education forum is, you know, how much screen time is okay? And, you know, right now, it's almost like a hundred percent screen time. Um, so, you know, we wanna still. Yeah, keep the uh the lines of communication open for those parents who who are growing more more concerned uh a- about the anxiety of having to work just on the computer and and the balance of now, I guess, being a uh uh parenting and and working all at the same time, which is maybe something a lot of parents hadn't had to deal with and and, you know, in many years, you know, since their children were little perhaps. Um, and and so we're 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 trying to to be uh to 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 let them know that, you know, we're still here and we're still listening. And then if you have uh any problems and anxiety, that all the board members are here to to take your concerns. Our our emails are out on our website and that the administration wants to know if if you're having any problems. So that, because this is really a work in progress. Um, I mean, they they put this together in what seemed like, I think, four days. Uh, I mean.
Yeah, it was literally that Thursday. It was a Thursday before the week started, you know, being closed. It was like, we had a a board meeting, I think it was a policy meeting or something that night at Homestead. And Marlene Solano and Jeff Solan were living in his office, you know, on a conference call with teachers, trying to get the format prepped. It it was less about Google Classroom and uh Screencastify, which I think they're using as a morus, was how we organize that content for the kids. So, you know, it's manageable. But yeah, it was literally less than, a- a- although I think they started planning a week in advance, but until, you know, really the the poop hit the fan, literally, like just less than a week before. I mean, literally.
I was ready to pull my kids out of school, whether it was closed or not.
Yeah.
So I'm glad it closed.
Let me.
I I didn't send them on that half day.
I mean, just respond one thing to Trish. So, you know, as late as school start times, the board has no position on this yet. Last year, the last board, a few members went and visited Greenwich uh Greenwich School District because they uh did a later school starts and I needed to see and talk to the kids there. In fact, we had a couple of kids that came back uh and and talk with the board and share us experiences. And at best, it was mixed. It it was almost like fifty percent, it helped some kids. Um, but then it hurt others who had at the school activities or, you know, had more advanced classes, you know, they they still had to put in the time. So since then, really, I've done much more work with it. We've heard from parents, we heard from uh some specialists talk about psychological facts and, you know, opportunities with kids starting later and getting more sleep.
Maybe they can take online classes now.
Well, when a new board took took effect and went to curriculum committee meetings and we talked about this briefly and both Marlene Solano and Jeff Solan said, look, you know, great idea, something we definitely want to consider. But as terms of priority for them, it's not a priority to school year. There's so much going on with the normalization plan, doesn't even go COVID. However, um, since we've been doing this online learning, I think we're gonna have to take a closer look at this. So my hope is when things settle down and the dust settles and we can measure the impact of online learning throughout the school closure, see what worked, what didn't work so well. We'll have to take a look at that. I'm not so sure it's a cool start sometime as it is a mixture of online versus in classroom. And, you know, just to remind us, we're only about three right now with the online earnings. Still totally new.
Tony, you broke up a little bit, so I didn't hear that last statement.
I said, we're only in about the third week of online lo- learning at this point. But throw it to.
It's a work in progress for sure. I've seen evolution already.
Yeah, I mean, so far, you know, we'll see if if there's a week six, i- if we even go there, how people feel. But um, you know, I would just, I think there's some something there for us. And and quite frankly, the way this is being delivered, I think this is initially what the parents that were against Summit or had ideas for, what they wanted to see was have our teachers use existing utilities, be a Google Classroom, still be greatly involved, but give it its flexibility, their assignment. So we're gonna learn from this, you know, I, we'll see.
There's there's gold here. There is.
It could be, but I'm hesitant because it's only, you know, we're we're just started this. And my fear is, you know, if the content is not fresh, refreshed, or the format's not changed periodically, uh, because the kids and parents have said one thing is they want us to do a little bit more interaction with the teachers. Now, so when you do a a meet at twenty-four, you know, video screens on a on a screen with a teacher and taught to everybody. So I think the fresh and rotated around as they're promising to do, it should be very productive. But let's see where we're into this. We have to measure and see what worked and what didn't. But there's definitely something.
Teachers are a little bit overwhelmed, more so than the the kids.
Well, they're parents too, you know, they they.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
You know, some some have, uh, you know, other other things to worry about the house, whether it's all the parents to take care of, their kids, their juggling. Like these.
So how can, um, you know, as as we're gonna wrap up this portion of the episode? Because you got, I'm realizing as we're going on, you guys need to come back because we we could do part two, three, four of this.
Um, we have definitely good stuff yet.
Well, I I get that.
The hour goes quick.
So if people want to follow the Board of Education, what's the best way they can do that?
Well, yeah. Oh, oh, well, I was gonna say, Tony's been doing a great job by uh posting uh to the uh the Cheshire Education Forum and then also sharing it to the the uh regular Cheshire uh forum.
The Cheshire Forum and the Cheshire Education Forum. If they search Cheshire Community Forum or Cheshire Education Forum on Facebook, they'll be able to find those two things.
Yes. And on top of that, now that we've been trying, we've been zooming and we've been uh using uh the the Google Hangouts and we found that we'll stream live on YouTube. Um, that's been a great to see our meetings or to to catch up on them afterward. It's a really easy way to do it if you're, especially if you're a cord cutter, uh, which increasingly is is happening.
Yes.
That you can uh watch our meetings on either on Channel fourteen or on the Cheshire Public uh Cheshire Cheshire Public School channel on YouTube.
Um, so there is, there is a YouTube channel and that's the the Cheshire Public TV?
That's Cheshire Public Schools.
Cheshire Public Schools.
Yeah, there's actually uh in the agendas I've been posting on the forums, there's a link to it, but we can post it up for more, for all the recorded meetings, even the YouTube live meetings we had a couple of weeks. So, you know, Adam mentioned the forums, it seems to be a very, I I post there, just get the order. But I could tell four members do monitor those forums.
Yep.
And we look for feedback and do get ideas. Uh, so it's a great avenue for us. We can always engage everybody in a lot of detail, but we definitely listen. Emails, the Cheshire or website has our email contacts. We get phone calls, we get a lot of phone calls, texts. So we're all available.
And then lastly, I mean, if they wanted to find out how to get in touch with you directly, they can visit the uh Cheshire uh Town of Website. So that's Cheshire C, I think it's Cheshire CT org.
Yeah, there might, there'll be a link there to the Cheshire Board Education website. But basically, Cheshire Public Schools website, you'll see uh Board of Education link on there on the left. You click on and the first page uses all our contact information.
Perfect.
Thank you guys for your time and commitment to Cheshire. I appreciate it. My kids appreciate it. And um, thank you.
Yeah, I mean.
For having us on.
I'll I'll uh reiterate what Tricia said. I mean, you know, I I have a relationship with both of you outside of the the show. Um, I I appreciate the time that you guys put into our town. Um, I know it's much, much more than just the Board of Education. Um, and, you know, that's what, I mean, Tricia and I've talked, said it a hundred times. I mean, one of the greatest things about doing this show, um, not only is it a way for us to give back to our town and introduce our our town to its very positive. to give back to our town and introduce our, our town to its very positive residents, but, you know, we get to talk to the people like you who, who go above and beyond the, uh, average citizen, if you will. You know, this is, this is a job that you guys do to benefit our children. And I think it's a thankless job. I think, you know, the, the amount of hours and time you put in, uh, to it is vastly underestimated and underappreciated. And, uh-
Yeah, I could tell you, I'm sure Adam will tweet for the kids, but then that's why we're here. I mean, we're, we have no political aspirations, it's not about politics, you know, I give back and help and, you know, it's-
Well, it helps property values too. Don't underestimate that.
I mean, it, it's challenging. I'll tell you, we can never make a hundred percent of people happy all the time.
Really?
But, uh, it, no, well, even on the board.
The unhappy ones are the loudest ones too.
If you want pain and misery, yeah, no, I'm just joking. It's, it's a, it's a hard fight, but it's a good fight. And again, try and do it for the right people, the right reasons and everybody will. I think we're having fun with it.
Yeah.
I am.
There's a lot to do, a lot of money to be procured, there's a lot of different things right now, but at least the kids are learning.
If you guys have us on again, I, I know Adam had to talk about some other things that the new board- well, when.
Yeah.
It takes a year to have to get us all together.
Because of new board members, a new board, there are some things that we're working on. I think the folks, you know, want to hear, but-
No, I think, um, I think what we need to do is, uh, immediately schedule a part two and, and especially since we're home, um, and we have, you know, more time available, uh, you know, we can, we can get another episode in. I just, you know, keeping, keeping them under 60 minutes has been, uh, has been great.
A lot going on.
And there's so much going on and so much information coming out that to, to run a long episode would be a disservice to the Board of Education, to be honest with you.
We appreciate your time.
So we, we totally appreciate it and, uh, we will, we will work to immediately schedule, uh, something else soon. Like within the next week.
We have an opening in June.
No, 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 we, we have, we have openings next week. We got nothing to do, we're not going anywhere.
Cory's got me doing, Cory's got me doing two shows a week. He's a slave driver.
Oh, no, we're-
I'm just happy to see more than Adam on these Zoom meetings. And not that, you know, I see so much lately, it's nice to have the variety.
Yeah, you can have someone else on.
Yeah. Well, you know, uh, thank you guys both very much for coming in and, or being, for Zooming in.
Yeah.
And, uh, being part of the show and, and sharing some information. And, and like I said, we'll, we'll get part two, three and four, uh, on the schedule cause there is so much more to talk about. As always, I'd like to thank everybody for listening to the show. If you've experienced, um, any positive vibes, which I think you have, because, you know, we wouldn't still be doing this if you weren't. You know, give us a, give us a positive review. Five stars is the best. You know, we understand if you're on the fence and if you're on the fence, you know, send us an email and tell us why. Uh, it's easy enough to get in touch with us, just info@cheshercast.com. And, uh, you know, you'll notice too, we'll be starting to put up a lot of YouTube videos. One of the greatest things about this quarantine is we've learned how to use some new technology. So we got a lot of stuff out. You can find-
Happy Passover too, everybody.
Happy Passover, everybody. And, uh-
I almost forgot, Happy Seder.
You can find us on all your favorite, uh, podcast apps, Stitcher, uh, iTunes, Spotify.
iHeart?
iHeart Media, Podbean.
Podbean.
All of them. Guys, did I forget any? Is there any you know of that I forgot?
Worldwide, you covered it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'd like to say hi to our new listeners in India. We've had an influx of listeners out in India. I want to say hi to Bupesh, uh, who's actually a friend of mine. I'm not making a joke here. We have, uh, some new friends that are listening to us in China, in Mexico. Uh, we have a couple of listeners in New Zealand. Hi Zeke, that's also a friend of mine in New Zealand. His name is Zeke. I know it's weird. It's, it's really been great doing this podcast with you, Trisha. I'm looking forward to many, many more episodes. We passed a milestone, we passed 80 episodes. So we're really, uh-
It's a lot of chatter.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
It's a lot of talking.
It's a lot of hanging out with me. I mean, I think that's more than, I think you talk to me more than my wife does at this point.
Listen, you're on your best behavior behind the mic.
Yeah, am I?
Adam?
Uh, he does okay. Oh, no, yeah, that, yeah, no, definitely, definitely behind the mic, yes.
It's his best behavior behind the mic.
Well, thanks everybody for listening and we're gonna leave now. So everybody let's say collective goodbye.